Test, test, test.
That's it.
Okay.
Again, sorry for the delay. I believe we're good to go. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So I have a point of privilege, Mr. Chair. If the live stream didn't start, I would request that I get to restate my comments.
Okay, I would say that is, that is fair. Please restate your comment.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. There was correspondence that came in from Halton Parents for Change. It was a carbon copy of a letter that went to the Ontario Human Rights Tribunal to the attention of Chief Commissioner Ina Chata in regards to a request for an inquiry for public interest in regards to violations that may have been violated of the Human Rights Code by the trustees of the Halton Catholic District School Board. This letter was sent on July 21st. It was emailed to all trustees on August 10th, and again on August 17th, and again on September 3rd, and again on September 7th. It was not included on the original board package on Friday. It's not listed on the agenda. I understand that it has now been uploaded with the pack, a package. However, I think it's important that those that are live streaming be flagged to that so that they know that they can go and view it now on the board agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. And as I mentioned, we will add it to the next board meeting also. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I would just have a point of clarification or for the presentation number 4.1. It seems to have more of a flavour of a delegation versus a presentation. And I looked in our bylaws 9.5, it says presentations are of general nature and might recognise outstanding achievements. And I'm curious why this was not a delegation and/or allowed as a presentation.
Trustee Carabella, we did have this debate, Vice Chair Dwork, myself and Director Daly. And I believe Director Daly, maybe you can refresh my memory. There was something specific about the delegations where we decided it seemed more suited towards presentations. Do either of you gentlemen recall?
I do recall that we had the conversation. I do recall that there was some consideration given as trustee Kelly, or former student trustee Kelly did not have an opportunity to speak to these last year, so we felt that it might best fit here in giving her opportunity to speak to the motions that she'd asked to be brought forward last year.
Trustee Carabella, does that satisfy, satisfy you? Or would you like me to reach out to Parliamentary Kapor for his opinion on the appropriateness?
Okay, that's up to you. Sure. Thank you.
Parliamentary Kapor, do you have an opinion on the appropriateness of putting this matter in as presentations versus delegation?
Good evening, Chair. It's, it's within your discretion as Chair as to how to place that in the agenda as per 9.6. And if that's the decision that you made, then the board, if they wish, can change that. But it's, it's within your, it's within your discretion and the, and as per the rationale that Secretary Daly has stated.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, did you have a follow-up question?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I have a notice of motion.
Okay, do you please state your notice of motion?
I'm going to just state the title right now.
Yes, yeah, sorry. That's what I meant.
Soliciting stakeholder feedback.
Soliciting... Okay, so that will go as information item 10.4.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Trustee DeRosa?
I will pass, Mr. Chair. I got my, I got insight into what I was thinking about. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other hands up, so we will, I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Trustee Agnew?
Moving by trustee Agnew. Do we have a seconder?
O'Brien.
Trustee O'Brien will go to a recorded vote. Trustee Carabella?
When a boarder, can you state for me where and how you've changed the agenda?
So we added under information items, the notice of motion from trustee O'Brien, 10.4 has been added.
That's the only item. I was referring back to 4.1. Are we leaving 4.1 as is?
Yes, there was no, no motion was moved to, to change it or to request the change.
Ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just in regards to correspondence that we received over the summer, there were also some minority reports. Will they be included in the agenda packages?
If they were requested to be put in the meeting, they should be. We'll have to review those to make sure that they, they get added.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for letting us know. Are we good? Rosie? So Rosie, I'm not sure everybody heard that. Rosie's computer is disconnected. That's why the agenda is not present. But once she reconnects, we will be able to put that back up. So, so right now we're at the approval of the agenda as amended. We have a mover of trustee Agnew, was seconded by trustee O'Brien. We're going to go to a recorded vote. Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien? Trustee Ohrenshunatso?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Mazri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
I am opposed, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair Dwork? Trustee Guzo?
In favor.
Trustee Entomasi?
Opposed.
And trustee Murphy's in favor, so the motion carries. Item three, declarations of conflict of interest. Do we have any conflicts of interest? No. Seeing that there is none, we will move on to item four, presentations. 4.1 in support of motions. I welcome back former student trustee Kelly, who will speak to notices of motion that she worked diligently on and helped move forward in June. And they are on the agenda as action items this evening. It's good to see you again, Ms. Kelly. Welcome. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Chair, and good evening, everyone. Thank you all for inviting me. I'm Kirsten Kelly, the outgoing Burlington student trustee. And today I'll be presenting reasons to support three of the motions originally on the agenda of the June 15th board meeting. Buzz and overview, the motions discussed will be the following: menstrual equity, Indigenous studies, and the Indigenous Equity and Human Rights roadmap, along with final thoughts in a conclusion. All three of these motions are concerned with the goal of enhancing an equitable environment for students. So first I'll begin with the motion of menstrual equity. So in 2020, the Board of Trustees here at Halton Catholic, we passed a motion to disrupt period poverty by reducing stigma and promoting accessibility in a way that allows students to realise their full potentials in school. Thus, in this way, we can also encourage the Ministry of Education to prioritise menstrual equity throughout Ontario. In bringing forward this motion, it was also discussed that there were many disparities that students face due to period poverty. According to Plan Canada's 2019 gender study, one in every three Canadian women under the age of 25 struggled to afford menstrual products. And 70% of women under the age of 25 years in Canada had missed school, work, or social activities due to their period. And such statistics don't even include those of different gender identities. A notable comment made by, made by student trustee Swan, who put the motion forward, mentioned that, quote, "Frankly, when you talk about access to menstrual products, it's no different than toilet paper. It's no different than, say, soap. Everything was on the same level. We don't expect students to bring their own toilet paper." So in this slide, the Toronto Youth Cabinet is encouraging the Ministry of Education to directly address the needs of all students who undergo the consequences of period poverty by ensuring free menstrual products. A petition they have started has currently over 13,800 signatures, as you can see here. And as a board that has already taken proactive steps to ensure that students have menstrual equity in our Halton Catholic community, it would be appropriate if the Board of Trustees were to pass this motion and write a letter to urge the Ministry of Education to implement menstrual equity at a provincial level. HCDSB can help to urge the government and tackle period poverty and join the provinces of British Columbia, Nova Scotia, and Prince Edward Island in providing free menstrual products to all students in their respective jurisdictions at the educational level. So next I'll be discussing the Indigenous Studies motion. So at the secondary level, the Ministry of Education offers five types of courses in the Native Studies, as you can see listed in the pictures taken from a ministry document. And there are many different levels that are offered as well. So, but yet there is an HCDSB, many HCDSB students are unaware of these courses or do not have them offered at their schools. And as a result, many students don't take these courses. So in the following slide, I'll be discussing how anti-Indigenous racism continues to persist in Canada and how it continues to grow more important that students need to all know and have the opportunity to fully understand and learn about the Indigenous people of Canada. In consulting several board staff, these courses are not offered at the majority of HCDSB secondary schools. And for those schools that do offer them, there happens to be a low application rate. This is because students and parents are either unaware of the option, or they do not believe it. It is an important course to take. This type of mindset needs to be challenged as Indigenous education and history are pivotal to understanding Canada. So according to our inclusive racial and curriculum and cultural curriculum letter written back in 2020, Halton Catholic has advocated for the curriculum to better include the perspectives of underrepresented and marginalised voices. Would this not also include the voices of Indigenous people? The board policy 2-45 Equity and Inclusive Education also states that students must be represented in the curriculum and heard in the assessment and evaluation. As it stands, these courses are only offered at a few of our secondary schools. And thus, there is a lack of acknowledgement or importance given to these courses, which can aid in improvement to the student understanding of Canada as a country. The promotion of Native courses would be consistent with our previous and current initiatives concerning equity and inclusion, as well as cultural responsive and relevant pedagogy. In secondary school, students learning of the political, historical, and socio-economic environment of Canada is enhanced. And a large gap is left in learning without the full understanding of the Indigenous impacts that have shaped and continue to shape the country as a whole. Therefore, I encourage the Board of Trustees to vote in favour of this motion, which increasing awareness and access to Native Studies. Finally, I'll be discussing the Indigenous Equity and Human Rights roadmap motion. So last year, students have bravely come forward and shared their lived experiences of racism and ostracisation within the board through surveys, feedback, and delegations. And they have reached out about their experiences in HCDSB schools, including incidents of the use of racialised slurs, the stereotyping of racialised students, the stigmatisation of differing cultures and encouragement of assimilation, the discomfort and intimidation of school resource officers towards students of colour, the over-representation of racialised students streamed in applied level courses or lower, and the ridicule of racialised students. Halton Catholic needs to address and disrupt such ostracisation that these students face with an inclusive and equitable approach to eliminate the disparities that have been presented. Students are only able to reach their full potential in a learning environment that prioritises their dignity. With consultation of board staff, this motion aims to create a safer space by addressing and acknowledging the needs of boards diverse student body. Inspired by the actions of the Ottawa Carlton District School Board in their Indigenous Equity and Human Rights roadmap of 2020, 2023, the Indigenous Equity and Human Rights roadmap is a motion that aims to, one, shed a light on current equity-based internal initiatives of HCDSB. So being transparent with the internal workings of Halton Catholic in a way that is publicly accessible can demonstrate the accountability and commitment in identifying and challenging systemic barriers in the board. And public accessibility to initiatives, resources, opportunities, and approaches provided can be crucial to confronting acts of ostracisation in a way that encourages the impact and outreach of board staff while also promoting the unlearning of racism and discrimination of marginalised group in a learning environment. This motion also aims to centre, in the second, it also aims to centre students' voices that are often underrepresented. So student experiences now more than ever, as mentioned, as the student stories that have been shared, are different from year to year. So it is of utmost importance that the board gives them a platform to speak, rather than to speak and assume on their own behalf. Thus, initiatives or opportunities that impact students should include input from our own boards diverse body of students. It allows for an accurate representation of the individual needs of the boards diverse student body. And lastly, this motion aims to take proactive steps, proactive steps to bridge the inequities that many marginalised students face. It is important to approach anti-oppressive systemic barriers in a manner that is preventative rather than reactive. Thus, providing resources catered to and for racially and culturally diverse students is important, such as access to mental health resources in which experience of racism, ostracisation, or cultural upbringing can affect experiences of trauma and mental illness. Acknowledging and addressing the lived experiences of these students is pivotal. Acknowledging and addressing the lived experiences of these students is pivotal in making sure that all students are able to realize their full potential by breaking down the barriers imposed upon them. Ultimately, this motion aims to create an outcome where all students are able to fully realize their talents. So please, help to create a safer, more transparent space and vote in favor of this motion. And to conclude, the final comments that I do have as to why I believe that all three of these motions should be passed is that all, although are each different in subject, they all intend to enhance equity and inclusion in the learning environment. It is important to aim to address the barriers that prevent students from excelling, participating, and succeeding in Halton Catholic. All students should feel like they can achieve, believe, and belong. I hope you consider passing these motions, and thank you once again for having me.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Are there any questions, trustees? No questions for a second time? You're very thorough, answered everything. There's no need, no need for questions. Thank you very much. Uh we'll move on to uh item four point two. Uh return to school, two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. Director Daly, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I did want to provide a bit of a an update with regards to the start of our school year and really probably focus a little bit more on um what parents can expect to be different from last year and also some of the uh procedures and protocols that uh they'll remember from last year. So again, a reminder to um to trustees and and to parents as well that um over the course of the spring and the summer, uh staff and um both board and school staff and uh some uh trustees and some parents uh have been working away at a couple of different areas to welcome our students back this school year, focusing on uh maintaining sorry about that. Maintaining safe and healthy schools, so all of those sorts of protocols that we had in place last year and some some revisions this year. Re-engaging our students, staff, and families into the uh the overall life of our school community uh by be- being able, hopefully, uh to re-engage through extracurricular activities, through school events, and through homeschool parish initiatives. Uh working to meet the needs of all our learners as they return to school, uh to meet them where they're at as they return after uh a period of being out of school. For some of our students, uh it's been five or six months since we saw them face-to-face in April. For some of our students, much longer than that, if they were studying remotely last year. Continuing to work on enhancing uh our our digital capacity in teaching and learning, both for students who are studying face-to-face and those online, and supporting our staff, our students, and our families with regards to mental health and well-being as we welcome them back to school this year. Uh so again, I wanted to touch a little bit on what's um somewhat different this year and then some of the continuing measures that we'll we'll have in place over the school year. Uh so again, the goals uh for our school year, I did just uh touch on, and they were uh based around those five key categories. With regards to things that are really quite new or different from last year, uh parents and uh trustees would know that one of the biggest differences is a return to full-day face-to-face instruction for our secondary students. Last year, we were on an adapted timetable where half of our students attended face-to-face and then uh studied remotely as well, and some of our students completely remotely. We're back to three hundred minutes of instructional time. Uh the ministry mandated for the fall semester that students uh would be in no more than two courses at a time in order to preserve the option to reverting to some more restrictive measures if necessary. Hopefully, we won't get to that point. So for our secondary students uh today and tomorrow, and then throughout uh the fall, they'll be starting their first trimester and their period one and period two classes. Some other differences on the curriculum end from last year. Uh last year, uh our instrumental music programs were really limited. This year, we will be able to use uh our provide a more fulsome instrumental music program with the use of wind instruments, uh both indoors and outdoors if necessary, and also vocal ensembles, both indoors and outdoors, if that's a curriculum expectation, with the appropriate um health and safety protocols in place. Again, with regards to our health and physical education curriculum, able to offer it uh in a more fulsome way this year, students will be able to use our gymnasiums uh to do high and low-impact activities, both indoors and outdoors. Again, with the appropriate health and safety protocols put in place, but students will be able to access uh phys ed equipment in a way that we couldn't last year. Another change, a big change for our elementary panel uh for this year, and also for some of our secondary students, EQA assessments are scheduled to resume this year. So our assessments of reading, writing, and mathematics at the grade three and six level. The Ontario Secondary School Literacy Test for our grade ten students will return this year with an administration, one in the fall and one in the spring. And the grade nine assessment of mathematics will be scheduled throughout the school year in order to accommodate our quadmaster schedule. Um so those aren't new per se, but returning. And as of um this week, we have no further direction from the ministry with regards uh to those assessments. So they are planned uh to be put into place for this year. A big change, uh and a welcome change for our elementary and secondary students again is a uh a return to a greater variety of clubs, activities, and teams. Again, with appropriate modifications or appropriate health and sa- safety protocols put in place. High-contact indoor sports like basketball are permitted, once again with modifications. Outdoor sports like football, uh girls' field hockey uh will be and are permitted as well. For our indoor sports, uh masking will be encouraged when they can be worn safely. That would be a fairly um uh low-endurance-type activities. We know that for sports like um um certainly for basketball, that as kids move up and down court and masks become wet, they really become ineffective. Uh but we are looking forward to a return to many different types of extracurricular activities. And in terms of athletics, they really mirror, to a certain extent, what's going on in the broader community. But we're hopeful that we can continue to offer some virtual or remote extracurricular activities where needed and necessary, or where we found that was really a a good way to engage our students, but also return to a more traditional in-person environment as well. Again, a a change from last year, shared spaces like libraries, computer, and tech labs, and gyms are permitted for both group and individual use. We will or we have resumed some community use of schools after school with some uh different protocols put in place and limits in terms of um of our community organizations. We'll maintain masking and distancing where we need to. Students will be able to or are permitted to use lockers and cubbies. Uh this is a little bit um uh I I I mean, it's it's tricky at both elementary and secondary, but certainly at the secondary level with greater numbers of students. It's something that our secondary schools are paying attention to in terms of when students can actually access their lockers and making sure that students are con- aren't congregating in big numbers for um, you know, for a large uh amount of time. Uh our cafeteria spaces are open for students to use. We don't have cafeteria service at this point. And uh our cafeterias are limited in terms of how many students can actually physically sit in the cafeteria. Again, this is something that um our secondary schools will need to keep an eye on. Uh certainly with good weather, uh students, and I know what happened today, students are out are accessing the outdoors for lunch. Uh but that'll only be available while the weather's still good. Um so we'll keep an eye on this, and if we have to open up some additional spaces near the cafeteria, that's something that we'll keep in mind as well. Um and something else that's being reintroduced this year are some of those third-party food programs that uh both at elementary and secondary, probably more typical of uh of our elementary schools, pizza days or hot lunch days. Those are, under the ministry uh guidelines, permitted to resume this year, again with the appropriate food handling and safety practices in place. Uh the daily self-assessment is not new per se. What's been new certainly for our elementary students and um uh for our secondary students as well is the confirmation of that daily screening. So we've been uh, we've been directed by the ministry for the first two weeks of school to confirm the daily screening of students as they come into school. All staff and visitors will need to confirm their daily self-assessment beyond that two-week period. Uh so for right now, students, staff, and visitors will confirm their self-screening. Once that two-week period is up, unless we receive some further direction uh from the ministry, uh it will be staff and visitors that will continue that process. There have been some modifications made to the school and childcare screening tool. Uh and parents would have seen that as they access the tool, getting ready for today um or getting ready for tomorrow. Also new this year, um and certainly there's been lots of uh interest in this, is the vaccination disclosure policy that the Ministry of Education announced on August seventeenth. Essentially, the policy says that all of our school board employees uh vis- uh uh volunteers to the building, uh people that we might work with from outside of our organization, but access the building on a frequent basis to help support students, our staff are required to um disclose their vaccination status. And anyone who is not fully vaccinated will be required to undertake twice-weekly rapid antigen testing. Though those tests will be supplied for for our staff, for our employees, anyway, those will be supplied by the ministry. We have not received our shipment of those tests yet, but uh we're 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 waiting on it. Um pharmacies up until the end of the month, I believe, will also be available for staff to access in order to do that rapid testing. So that's new for this year as well. Um improved ventilation again is not new per se, but there was certainly lots of work uh done in our board and many boards across the province to make sure that our ventilation systems, HVAC systems, are in proper running order. So all of our schools and work sites have been inspected uh since last spring, where recommissioning or rebalancing was necessary, it was conducted where needed. We've updated our equipment uh to the highest uh filter ratings possible that we that we could. Our ventilation equipment will run for a couple of hours prior to the beginning of the school day, and then after building occupancy at the end of the day. Uh so either, once our staff and students leave and or when community use groups leave, we'll run it uh as well. The number of air exchanges throughout the day has been increased. Our HVAC systems have all been calibrated for maximum airflow. Kindergarten classrooms and some select other learning spaces have standalone HEPA filters in them. The ministry has uh for this school year introduced a standardized ventilation measures report, and that can be found on our board website. And uh that ventilation report has been up since the end of last week. Um again, in terms of some curriculum uh changes, we uh people are aware that the new grade-nine math curriculum is in place for this September. So that's our new destreamed math course, uh uh MTH one W, so that uh replaces the grade-nine academic and grade-nine applied math courses. We still are offering a locally-developed math course for a specific uh set of students, but the majority of our students uh will be in the uh new destreamed ma- or the new grade-nine math curriculum. Uh uh just to point out to to parents as well, that um for students who are enrolled and accepted into pre-AP or pre-IB math, those students will be congregated into a math course, so MTH one W pre-AP or MTH one W pre-IB. So our grade-nine math, the new ni- grade-nine math curriculum is being introduced this September. A few reminders for parents whose students may be um at the kind of the end of their educational time with us. Uh for students who are graduating this year, the uh requirement for community service hours has been reduced to twenty hours for graduating students. It'll go back right now. It's planned to go back to forty hours for next year's graduating class. So for students who are graduating this year, the community service um uh requirement is twenty hours of community service. Similarly, for students who are graduating this year, the literacy requirement, so either the literacy course or successful completion of the Ontario Secondary Schools Literacy Test is not required. However, those graduation requirements will be restored next year. So the OSSLT, the Ontario Secondary School Literacy Test, will be written this year, but it's for students who will be graduating beginning next year. In terms of some measures that will continue, so measures that we put in place last year that will continue largely the same this year or with some slight modifications, they're really kind of grouped around um health and safety protocols, but also some supports that we we had in place last year that will continue this year. Terms of supporting our students with uh with special needs, uh we'll continue with the supports that we had in place, both face-to-face and for remote learners last year. Uh in terms of some uh either team meetings or individual meetings with parents and students, uh last year, they were largely uh done virtually. We'll continue with a combination of virtual and face-to-face meetings where possible, appropriate, and desired. Uh we found that that mixture last year uh was really helpful, both to parents uh and staff in some circumstances. Uh so we'll continue with those processes through this school year. In terms of supporting uh student mental health and our families and staff, we'll continue with a tiered mental health support. Um we've we've received and continue to receive lots of support from School Mental Health Ontario. We do have a team that's building a curriculum um uh specific to mental health literacy lessons, and those will begin to uh make their way into the system in October, and a parent information package will be created uh for that program as well. Uh we'll continue to take direction from Halton Region Public Health in the event uh that we do have students exhibit symptoms or uh students may have positive cases of COVID-nineteen in school communities. So we'll continue to work in conjunction with Halton Public Health and communicate as soon as we can with uh parent communities around any case management that does come up. We're requiring, again, all of our students from K to twelve to wear masks at school indoors, in the hallways, during class, and if they uh are accessing um transportation uh uh busing uh to our schools. Mask breaks as last year will be provided in the course of the school day. Students will be able to take masks off outside and maintaining their distancing. For our staff, they will be wearing uh masks at all times when in the building. Uh they'll be required to wear masks outside if they can't maintain that physical distancing uh from students, and the same will be um be in place with regards to um eye protection or face shields for staff. for staff. And again, there are exemptions, reasonable exemptions granted to students with regards to wearing masks, and those exemptions are, to a certain extent, unchanged from last year. But I think it's important to note that in terms of an exemption on a medical basis, that's really a designation that comes from a healthcare practitioner. We don't make medical determinations at the school level, so parents who are requesting an exemption on those grounds should be reaching out to their school principal and then connecting with their healthcare practitioner. What Halton Public Health has told us, and what's in their return-to-school guidance, is that there are few, there probably are few valid medical exceptions for somebody unable to wear a mask, that doesn't mean there's none, but they probably would be few. So that's something that a primary care provider, such as a family physician or a nurse practitioner, needs to evaluate and then provide clear direction in order for schools to follow up on that. I don't want to speed through the remainder of the slides, but many of these practices we had in place throughout the year last year had great help from our staff and from our parents in preparing our students to continue with things like good hand hygiene, to maintain distancing both inside and outside of the building, whether it's the physical setup of the building or as students are moving about our facilities. Staff did receive updated health and safety training on our PA Day. There is also those health and safety modules and protocols around masking, distancing, and donning and doffing of PPE are available to staff on our employee self-serve portal as well. Schools do have in place, again, trying to minimize contact, staggered entries, drop-off and pickup protocols, students using bottle fillers as opposed to water fountains. So those procedures that we put into place last year, I think with great success, will continue for this year. Again, any visitors to the school need to both complete daily self-screening and also confirm that self-screening when they come to the school, and must also wear a medical mask while on school premises. Cleaning and disinfection will continue as it did last year around all of our classrooms and high touchpoints throughout the day. And students that were back, if they were back at school today, would have been reintroduced to the signage that's posted outside of the school, some signage or divisions on the playground, certainly directional arrows within the school, reminders about hand hygiene, reminders about self-screening, those are all back up in the schools as well. In terms of updates, our return-to-school updates are on the board website on a dedicated kind of microsite that's right on our front page. It includes our return-to-school plan, and returns, also includes the Halton Region Public Health protocols, the ministry guidelines. We'll keep it updated with any further ministry communications we get and keep updating our frequently asked questions page as well. And that's my update with regards to some new things that parents and our students will experience this year, and happy to answer any questions that trustees might have either on these updates or any other questions I might have that have arisen either today or over the course of the last couple of weeks.
Thank you, Director Daley. On the speakers list, we have trustee Agnew Guzzo, then Carabella. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, it's great to see everybody back. I have got a couple of questions, so I'll just start and then go back in the queue if I need to. But one of the questions I have is around the cafeteria protocols, specifically in high school. So understanding that the lunch breaks are by grade within assigned time and that we have to be careful of the numbers, so that's why that's been done that way. Once the kids get into the cafeteria, are there further restrictions on them as far as how many kids can sit at a table and restrictions like that?
Director Daley, you have the floor?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, and I'm going to redirect some of these questions to some of our superintendents who have been more intimately part of different planning phases. So with regards to cafeterias and the setup there, I'd invite either Superintendent Bickeich or Superintendent Merrick to talk about some of those protocols that we have in place in our secondary schools.
Let's go with Superintendent Merrick, I'll pick one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, the requirement set out in the ministry guidelines, it's twofold, and it's the lowest of the two numbers, but it's either 50% of the capacity of the cafeteria, which will be based on the reopening Ontario Act. So we do a fire rate of capacity for seated individuals in all of our cafeterias to be half of that number, and the other requirement is that we have two-meter spacing in between each of the cohorts. So, you know, I guess you could, in theory, have a single class sitting in one area and they could be, you know, less than two-meter distance between that group, but then they have to be two meters from the next cohort, realizing that in our cafeterias, it's very tough for, you know, a lunchtime supervisor or a commissioner to know who's in what class. We space out our cafeterias with two-meter distancing in between to the chairs. That way, any student can sit in any area, and that way, and they'll be two meters apart from the nearest person, which will then give us two-meter distancing in between cohorts, just like the ministry guideline requires. So that's kind of the guidelines we've given to our secondary administrators, realizing this week, the first week back, we had half the students at school today, half tomorrow, and then everybody on Thursday. We will see how things go, and we'll make adjustments as needed based on what we observe throughout the first few days, in the first week of school.
Trustee Agnew, do you have a follow-up question?
I do. So understanding the part with respect to the maximums in the actual cafeteria itself as far as full numbers, I'm actually referring specifically to the tables within the cafeterias. So I understand from some parents that, you know, there could be a maximum of four students at a table, and I'm wondering if that is factual, is that the model that we're going with? I think that's fairly restrictive, it's okay for the warm weather right now, but I don't know how you restrict a four students at a table. So I wanted to know if that was actually one of the restrictions that was being put in place, and then also, are these students required to fill out QR codes as well?
I can jump in again, I'm just trying to clarify there, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. I mean, how many people at a table would depend on the size of the table? It's two-meter distances in between chairs, so we've removed many of the chairs from the cafeteria. We have different sized tables, we have different setups, we have some schools that have benches, and they're like more like, they're like indoor folding picnic tables inside, so we have benches with tables. So we've spaced out where people can sit at two-meter intervals, and that will give us two meters, then it doesn't matter if the student, you know, next to you is in your cohort or not, you're still two-meter distancing, which maintains the two-meter distancing in between cohorts. So that's what we've gone with for there. I don't believe there's any requirement for any of the schools for filling up QR codes to go into the cafeteria, and that's why we're trying to maintain the two-meter distancing, which means that they're staying distance from other cohorts.
Okay, I'll go back in the queue, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor?
Hi, thank you, and I'm sorry to go into a different subject, because I know trustee Agnew probably has some more questions around that, but I just wanted to talk about class sizes. I know last year we had implemented a class cap. I was wondering if we could have an idea of where we are for class averages and what the largest class sizes are, particularly in our FDK classes.
Superintendent Danalfo, would you like to take that one?
I can, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Guzzo's question. Trustee Guzzo, so for our kindergarten classes, we have 95% of our classes at 25 and under with regards to the size. So we have many classes who are 25, 24, some at 15. A class at 15 only has a teacher and not a DECE. We currently have six classes over the 25, and the situations where that is happening is where there's a school with just one class of kindergarten students or a school where there's actually no more classroom spaces in that school to accommodate, and portables are at the maximum. Okay, so we've gone up over the 25 to 26, and in one case, 27, okay? This week, we are looking at our numbers because we want to make sure the actual bodies that are in the classrooms are exactly the students who are coming in, because the kindergarten numbers are based on registration, and we want to confirm that that's the registration we do have coming into the school. So by the end of the week, we will revisit those numbers to make sure we're there, and if there's an opportunity to lower those few that are just over 25, we will, but in some cases, it may be in the best interest for the school if there's no more space or so that they can continue to have the teacher and DECE as that partnership, because we've also learned that that's really valuable for that kindergarten program to have those two bodies with that size of a group. I can take any questions.
trustee Guzzo, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, if we can just, if you can let us know as well for the other classes, the other, like the intermediate and senior classes, how they've worked out where we are with those averages.
Okay, so with primary, we do have the ministry mandate of 90% of our classes to be at 20 to 1 ratio, and we're at 89% for that, okay? So none of our primary classes will go over 23, but we're 1% close to where the ministry wanted all of our classes, so we will align those numbers this week with a little reorganization. For grades 4 to 8, the average class size is 23.25. So we staffed at 25, we have some schools where we've got some classes just over 25 and some classes under 25. The highest we've gone is, we've done a couple 27s, there's a 28, and that's where a principal has come back to me to ask that, can I have a straight class with these intermediate students? Because if it's one Grade 7 class and one Grade 8 class, at 28 is more desirable for the students and for parents that way. So that's how we adjusted those numbers.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Director Daley, regarding the vaccine disclosure policy, so where is that on our website? Do we have that available? And the other thing I wanted to ask is, it will be coming to the policy committee?
Director Daley, you have the floor?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I'll answer, I guess, the first question. There is not a, there's nothing listed on the board website. What we've, both senior staff and staff have been working on is the best way, both from an expediency sort of process, but also with regards to security of information, is how we can best collect those attestations from our employee groups. So we do have a process in place for employees to register, for lack of a better term, they use our board's internal website to do their attestation, to upload their vaccination documents as well. What the ministry requires is that boards have a procedure in place to be able to do that. So while the ministry, certainly the public-facing information that we've had from the ministry has used the word "policy," in fact, what they're wanting boards to do is have a procedure in place that they can collect that information and then be able to report in an aggregate, both to the ministry and to the public, how many employees are fully vaccinated and how many aren't, so by percentage. So not individual employee names, but an aggregate of all of those employee groups.
Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up?
Well, I do. I would expect it to come to the policy committee. I think that it is called a policy. I've seen a draft, or I don't know, original from Toronto Catholic Policy on that, and it's something that I think should come. We've had other policies requested by the ministry. We've had one on concussion, the strategic planning, seeing eye dogs. So I would expect it to come to the policy committee. I think it should be a policy and not just a procedure. I have another, that was more of a comment, I guess I didn't have a question. My question is then, in particular, for the options that are available, what are the options that are available for staff? And my follow-up to that is, how is their privacy maintained in the working environment?
Director Daley?
Okay, I'll start with the process a little bit, and I may lean on Superintendent Loffs to talk a little bit about the security and from an IT perspective. But essentially, employees, volunteers, third-party groups that work in schools are required to attest to either having had two vaccinations, so they would upload, so they would attest that they've been double vaccinated and upload the proof of their vaccination. They could attest that they have a medical exemption from vaccination, and again, that's a relatively limited number of people that would have a medical exemption for our employees if that's when they go onto the attestation site, if that's what they're testing to, then they're directed to speak to Human Resources in order for us to be able to verify that. And then we may have employees that only have one vaccination done so far. Essentially, if an employee does not have both of their vaccinations completely done, they'll be required to do twice-weekly testing until such a time as both vaccinations are completed. And maybe if it's okay, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Loffs, maybe to talk about, a little bit about that security of information that we're gathering from these groups.
Through you, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. With respect to the security of the attestations, they're actually all secured our own server, so it's not a third-party server, it's on our own server where we are securing the data for the attestation and the upload.
Thank you. Vice Chair Duarte hasn't asked a question yet, so he'll be next, and then we'll go back to you, trustee Agnew. Vice Chair Duarte, you have the floor?
Mr. Chair, just a point of clarification to Secretary Daley. The slide that you put up regarding pre-AP math, could you just slide over? I might have missed something there. The codes for the D-streamed math, what is that?
Okay, I may need some help on this one.
So my question is here, what's the code for the D-streamed math and what's the difference between the code for pre-AP math and the pre-AP math for ID? So I see that the pre-AP math code is MTH1W and MTH1W1 for pre-ID, so what's the D-streamed code for Grade 9 Math? Is MTH1W the same as pre-AP?
I'll seek some help on that one, Vice Chair Duarte, and I'm not sure if either Superintendent Kroll or Superintendent Cordero can speak specifically to the new Grade 9 Math Course Code that we're using to designate the two supper courses?
Superintendent Kroll or Superintendent Cordero?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I don't have that information in front of me. Trustee Duarte, in the past, we designated it by a sixth, by a digit, so a different digit at the end to indicate an AP or an IB course, but I can't speak specifically. But I can't speak specifically to what we're using right now, but I can certainly get that information for trustees.
Superintendent Cordero, give your hand up.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. I believe it's as Superintendent Kroll has indicated, there is an A at the end of the course code for the AP program.
For the AP, okay, so so can support that. Okay, thanks for that clarification. Another comment here, Mr. Chair?
Please go ahead.
We did have a great day today, and this question goes to Secretary Daley again. We had some students going to school today. We did have some feedback. We did have some glitches in the system. Overall, it was great. But can you share the feedback that we got on the first day? And how do we plan to mitigate that in the days coming?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. I I guess in general terms, some of the feedback at the secondary level, and generally the the feedback, and when I'm talking about feedback, we're reaching out to our school administrators to check in and see how the day went. I've received no emails directly from parents today about, I don't believe, about the startup. Those might have flowed through family of school superintendents. I know at secondary, there were some glitches with regards to accessing. Just a little check here. And any family of school superintendents who want to jump in to say, here's a conversation you've had with an administrator. That would be helpful.
Superintendent Cordero?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Again, I had the opportunity to follow up at the conclusion of the school day with the school principals at both Christ the King and St. Thomas Aquinas in Oakville. And both school administrative teams informed me that they had a relatively smooth day. There were some challenges for students in terms of knowing where their classes were in the building, predominantly grade nines. But other other than the the small nuances towards, you know, a new this new school building, a new group of students, that that things went quite well.
Thank you. Did you have specific questions, Vice Chair Duarte, or specific point you would like to bring up?
Mr. Chair, was this a challenge question to Director Daley? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I I think I I didn't try to deflect it. And I can certainly, I I'm just trying to remember the email that I got from one of our family of school superintendents regarding if if it was an issue, and I think it was at St. Francis Xavier, that some parents had problems accessing. I'm assuming it's people who are trying to connect remotely. Maybe Superintendent Bakai could remind me of what she sent me this afternoon amidst many, many communications I had today. I know that that was a bit of a challenge at that school. So I'm assuming it probably was something of a challenge at other schools. Superintendent Bakai?
Yes, hi, and through you, Mr. Chair, and follow-up to Director Daley said they did report some difficulties with login, and I think that a lot of it was just because of all of the traffic required to get on to the system. They did reach out to the IT department, and I know that they were working very diligently to rectify those problems. By the end of the day, I did hear that there was an improvement, so they're looking to have a smooth entry to it tomorrow. So hopefully, all goes well.
Thank you. Superintendent Nar, did you have anything to add?
Sure, just to say that same thing from from the high schools that I'm supporting right now. Again, everything was great. They were actually really happy to have the students back in the school. There were a few glitches with Power School, which is our new system that we're using. Just in in, it was taking a little longer to, if they had to reschedule a student, so there was just a few glitches there. And as Superintendent Bakai said, just a couple of glitches with logging in. But overall, really good day for everybody.
Good. Great, great news. Thank you.
I I think the, through you, Mr. Chair, I think the challenge for our secondary schools, aside from the, you know, obviously, the teaching and learning part of our job, which is the, you know, the most important part, is that we'll be getting used to having all of our students back in the building when they all do return in a couple of days. So hopefully, they're getting a sense of of entrance and exit and movement and when breaks can happen, so they're not all happening at the same time. You know, while the, obviously, the guidelines and direction we give are the same to all of our, all of our schools and all of our secondary schools, they are unique in terms of layout. In, as as Superintendent Merrick mentioned, layout of the school, layout of the cafeteria, the seating in the cafeteria. Some schools have round tables, some schools have tables that pull apart, some have benches with a fixed seating. So there is some kind of fine tuning that has to happen at each individual school level as well in order to 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 kind of meet those requirements. Same things around accessing lockers and those sorts of things that, while the plans are in place, it's it's difficult to get a sense of it until everybody's back in the building.
Thank you. So up next on the, to just review the speakers list, we have trustee Agnew, trustee Carabella, then trustee Guzzo. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, and through you, Mr. Chair. I have a question with respect to vaccinations. And we've recently seen several organized associations, community organizations, sports organizations come out with a vaccine policy. So one of the most recent examples would be the OMHA, who's come out to say that the expectation or the mandate will be that their athletes are vaccinated. What are we looking at as far as our athletes at our schools and a mandatory vaccine policy?
Director Daley?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. So what we've tried to do as we've entered into the school year is follow both the direction that we've received from the ministry and and from public health. So we do meet with public health weekly. They are aware of of the the protocols that we have in place around athletics. We do not have, we have not mandated our students to do a vaccination disclosure, any students at this point, and not specifically to athletics. I'm aware of at least one school board that has taken that position. There may be more, but I do know of one specifically. And in that case, it, and I don't want to say it's problematic to go that route, but one of the, one of the things that they're they're dealing with a little bit is that it would be incumbent on, my understanding is, anyway, parents would have to, if their students, if if their kids weren't vaccinated and and the policy was then the the ongoing testing, that that's something that parents would have to pay for. The ministry hasn't made any commitment to, that I'm aware of, to provide rapid testing for students. So sorry for that long-winded response, trustee Agnew. At this point, we have not given that direction to schools, and that would be quite a change from the guidance that we've provided so far. So I think that would be something we would need to consider as a board if we were going to take that step.
Trustee Agnew, do you have a follow-up?
I do want something else, just a, just one comment on that, which I do think we need to take a look at what's happening with organized sports across Ontario. So again, you know, OMHA is one example. We've seen it happen with the Barracuda, the Burlington Barracudas. And there are more sports organizations because you can only control your cohorts as much as you can within your individual team for practices or individual team play against each other in scrimmages and whatnot. But then maybe you start, you know, engaging with other students in other schools. I think you're increasing that risk, and I think that's why those organization organizations have gone that route. So I think it's something that we should definitely be at least considering. I have a question around ventilation, and I was glad to see all of the information that you provided on the slide around ventilation. What I didn't see was around the testing of air quality. So we're seeing, which is, you know, we're seeing all these great things that have been put in place, the HVAC systems, you know, updated equipment, but how do we know that the air quality is optimal and how often is that being done?
Director Daley, or Superintendent Merrick?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. I mean, right now with the ministry guidelines, there is no requirement for air quality testing. We do do air balancing and commissioning of our air qual, of our HVAC systems in our schools. That's maybe have good air turnover in our schools. We do have, it's about, it's a little less than half of our schools, on the newer schools. About twenty-three out of our fifty-six schools have CO two, so carbon dioxide monitors within the systems. I mean, they're really not there for air quality monitoring. They're they're more there in traditional times to reduce the, they're more there for energy efficiency to reduce the number of air changes. We basically overridden those now to try and increase the number of air changes during during COVID. But we're trying to take the approach, like many other boards of the province, to increase the number of air changes in our schools, which will help with the the air quality indoors by increasing the number of air changes in our classrooms and our learning environments.
Okay, so there's no plans at this time then to introduce regular air quality testing?
No, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So trustee DeRosa and trustee Mazri Amar haven't spoken yet, and they're have their hand up. So we'll have trustee DeRosa, trustee Mazri Amar, then trustee Carabella, then trustee Guzzo. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just a point of clarification with Director Daley, and maybe I understood him incorrectly. But with respect to the testing, did I say that that was to the account of the parents? And if that is the case, do we have an estimate as to, or do we have any idea what what the the total envelope of that testing would cost? Maybe that might be something we would look into to see whether we can facilitate, the board can facilitate that.
Director Daley?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair, and thanks for asking the question of clarification, trustee DeRosa, because I I I might, I I don't think I explained that process all that well. So so currently, our our students, none of our students are required to do a vaccination attestation. And therefore, none of our students are required to do the frequent testing. I think what trustee Agnew was suggesting was that for students involved in extracurricular activities, particularly in sports, there are some community sports organizations that are requiring students or, yeah, I guess there's students, kids that participate, that if they aren't fully vaccinated, that they need to do the twice weekly testing. I again, I know a school board that's taken that position. There might be more. My understanding is, and this is not based on anything official from the school board, it's it's really kind of anecdotal, is that for, if students are required to go get those tests because they they haven't had their their double vaccination, they'd be required to pay to get the test done. My understanding is, the cost is, you know, I I've heard it's forty dollars, but I don't know if that's accurate. So maybe strike that. So we don't have a process or a procedure in place right now that requires students to get testing. But my understanding is, if you need to get a test, it's somewhere in that in that price range. But we haven't mandated that for any of our students. And for employees that may be required to do that, the ministry is providing rapid antigen testing kits to school boards at least to start the year off. I I, did that clarify, trustee DeRosa?
Just a follow-up will will help, will help just make the point that that I'm trying to, I think I'm trying to to make here. So as I understand it, in the interest of fostering participation in sports, which I, which is what I think we're talking about, and trustee Agnew was referring to. My point is as follows, in the interest of fostering participation in sports, because it's good for the overall, it's good for the student, mental health and so on and so forth. The testing required in order for that participation to take place. I'm hearing in your message that that would be to the account of the parents. Is that correct?
We don't have, we don't have that testing in place. I I I don't believe that if we put that requirement in place, we would receive testing kits from the ministry, either of health or education. Who bore the cost or who would bear the cost of that testing if we put that procedure into place would really be up for the board to decide.
Okay, and this is, it's exactly what I'm leading to, is that we might give it, once we make an assessment of what those costs might be, the potential costs, we might be, we might want to give consideration to covering that on behalf of the parents. That's all, that's all, that's my only point.
Thanks. Thank you, trustee DeRosa.
Thank you, trustee DeRosa. Up next, we have trustee Mazri Amar.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to ask about exams. I know we did talk about it last board meeting. But going back to school today, still teachers were a little confused if exams are going on. So would you be able to clarify that for me, please?
Director Daley?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Superintendent Kroll will be able to provide some clarification with regards to end of semester assessments.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we've had discussion with our school principals, based on some work that was done this summer about final exams, our colony activities. Now, as we typically do, we we convene our subject councils early in the year, or convene them earlier this year to have those discussions around which courses best lend themselves to written exams, which courses may lend themselves best to colony activities. So we're going to have our subject councils be making decisions for each of those. There's also an understanding that we've shared with principals that we will have kids that will need help in sort of learning the types of skills to write exams. So that'll also be a focus of the instruction that will be happening this year. Hope that answers your question.
Trustee Mazri Amar, do you have a follow-up question?
Thank you. No, okay.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Intomasi has his hand up. He hasn't spoken yet, so we'll put him ahead of trustee Carabella and then trustee Guzzo. Trustee Intomasi, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Merrick. So we've conducted all the inspections, and we've recommissioned and balanced our airflow within the our schools. Do we have an actual report that catalogs the report that came forward from every school?
Superintendent Merrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. So I I think trustee Intomasi is referring to the standardized ventilation report that the ministry is requiring us to post. And that is posted on our forward website.
Can you tell me where?
Yep, I believe you go to the return to school plan page. And then under there, you're under the maintaining safe and healthy schools button. And then from there to the ventilation page through there. So the icons for each of those as you go in, and that's the bottom of that page.
So can we have that report sent to trustees as opposed to us going and and searching it? That should have been part of this return to school report. Thank you.
So we'll get that, we'll get that report circulated to trustees. Trustee Intomasi, do you have a follow-up?
I do not.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is back to my, this is to Director Daley. So he gave me two examples on the attestation, whether you're fully vaccinated or partially, and a medical exemption. Are you saying that there is no option for a religious creed, human rights exemption? Or to take the educational classes about COVID nineteen, or an option that says prefer not to answer?
Director Daley?
Through you, Mr. Chair. For the, for the items that you mentioned, trustee Carabella, there is an option or a requirement, if a if a person does not, if a person qualifies if, if a person qualifies under one of those conditions, that there is a mandatory, mandatory is the word, yeah, mandatory education piece that, that they have to undertake. We haven't received that yet from the ministry, and I'd have to actually go into our internal system, because I've already done my attestation. I'd have to go quickly back in to see what the other categories are. But any of those items that are mandated as part of the procedure by the ministry, employees would be able to access those various options. So thanks for, thanks for mentioning those.
Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up?
Well, I do, Director Daley, and thank you, Mr. Chair. So I looked at other boards, and because now I see that Niagara Catholic, right on their board website, under vaccinations, it says, "The Ministry of Education, Ministry of Health, and Niagara Region Public Health continue to promote vaccinations for all Ontario residents who can have one, based on their doctor's guidance. However, vaccinations remain voluntary and, and a personal or family decision. Neither students nor staff are required to be vaccinated to attend slash work at schools in person, nor are they required to disclose vaccine status. Parents will not be advised of a teacher or classmate's vaccination status, as this is protected information." So that sort of speaks to me that it's a policy that, it's coming from the ministry, but how do you, how do you explain this? I think this is a very healthy policy, or, or way of dealing with vaccinations and making consent voluntary. And so, yeah, I'm, do you have a comment on that about?
I guess my comment, my comment, trustee Carabella, would be that we are not requiring anyone at this point to be vaccinated. We're asking, under the direction of the ministry, for our employees to attest to their status. And if employees cannot attest to being fully vaccinated, they'll be required to test twice weekly, in order to ensure that they're, for their, in order to ensure our safe learning and working environments. We are not requiring staff or students to go out and get a vaccination. We're encouraging them to, but we are not requiring it. It's not a mandatory vaccination requirement, it's an attestation requirement.
Thank you, Director Daley. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of questions. The one is, just going back to the, the sports piece with the mixing of cohorts, I guess, I kind of, I have, I don't understand how we're saying that we're not going to allow kids to mix cohorts at school outside in the playgrounds, but yet, we're going to have sports being played with mixed cohorts and other schools. Can I just have thoughts on, especially in the smaller schools, where, you know, you've already got small class sizes to limit mixing of cohorts, especially when we have some classes where there's only a few girls or a few boys, it could make for very difficult situations. Can, I just get some thoughts on that?
Director Daley?
Sure. And maybe I'll ask Superintendent Bakaij just to talk a little bit about the guidance that we've received from Halton Public Health with regards to cohorting and, I guess, cohorting in recess and athletics as well.
Superintendent Bakaij, you have the floor?
Yes, and thank you, through, through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Guzzo, yes, we've been in lots of conversations with public health. And from a public health perspective, cohorting is really important, because it reduces the number of students that have to be dismissed after an exposure to a positive case, and ultimately reduces the risk of an outbreak within a school. And they've advised that while not possible to maintain cohorting in all situations, the recommendations is to maintain cohorting in as many areas as possible, while still allowing our students to participate in some activities that they were not allowed earlier to participate in. It's, it's really important to reduce the number of contacts, and especially because of the variant that everyone is probably aware that it is more contagious than other variants in the past. And so what they've recommended in terms of phys ed is because of, or, or sport teams, is that they are requiring students, and we are requiring students to, to verify their self-screening. The numbers are limited in terms of team numbers, and they become, they become their cohort. So it's, it's kind of a, trying to balance the protocols with, you know, giving students the opportunities to promote well-being and, and balancing those safety issues at the same time. So we are monitoring it very closely, but essentially, especially in, in situations in a small school, that mixing cohorts outside at recess could really, if there's a case, could really involve a lot of classes at one time, if they had to be dismissed. So that, that's the direction that they've given us, trustee Guzzo, all along. And so, you know, we're, we're trying to find that balance, as I've noted. Sorry.
Trustee Guzzo, do you have a follow-up?
It's not a follow-up, it's a clarification, because my question really was, you know, I understand the whole, for identification and not mixing cohorts. I fully understand that piece, Superintendent Bakaij. My question, though, is, is if that truly is the direction, and that we're maintaining that, how can we say that we're trying to limit the amount of cohorts, when then we're saying, okay, we can play sports, even though they're doing self-screening, everybody's doing a self-screening in the morning, not just those playing extracurricular? That, right there, throws that whole thing out the window. We're talking about cohorts being able to mix outside in the playgrounds versus our students playing sports teams. So I just, I don't, I just don't understand the two. It's a recommendation from public health, it's not required by public health.
One of the things, trustee Guzzo, that, you know, they, they've pointed out, is, especially in secondary, we're dealing with students that probably have a higher vaccination rate than, than in elementary schools. I, I do hear your concern, and I'll, I'll take it back to our public health table, but it is the direction that they've encouraged and recommended, and, and, you know, in terms of following also the ministry's guidance around providing extracurricular sports. That's how they've asked us to sort of balance both. So I do hear what you're saying, and I know the concern. Dr. McGanney has reiterated the notion of cohorting, especially to ensure that we limit the number of exposures. So I know, I can, I know that it's, it's frustrating, and, you know, we're trying our best to, to manage both areas.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. It's really, it's a follow-up question in regards to tech distribution in the high schools, and I may have missed an email, but I didn't see it. For those students who require tech, how were we able to get it out to them for the start of today's online learning and for tomorrow's online learning, for secondary?
Director, who's best? Is, is Bill Cripps online?
Sorry, and through you, Mr. Chair. Secondary schools were asked to communicate with parents, and I think we sent a reminder out towards the end of last week, that if a parent did need, or a student did need help with tech, that it would be available for them from the school. I, I do know, I'm thinking of two schools off the top of my head, I know that some parents did reach out to the school to acquire tech devices for either yesterday or tomorrow, or both. I'm, I'm not sure if that answers your question, but we, we did clarify with a message to secondary parents, that if there were tech needs that they have, that they could reach out to their schools. I'm seeing from a couple of superintendents that they know that did happen at their schools. I'm not sure if that answers your question, trustee Guzzo?
I, just to, just to, I guess, a clarifying point on that, Director Daley, it does. I just think in future, I think, I'm hoping that we don't have to go to deal with anything like this again. But I think it's really important for us to look at it from an equity lens, in that we can't assume that everybody has the same access. And that should have been something that was communicated in the original, when the decision was made to stagger entry. We do have students that can't afford it, don't necessarily have tech, multiple children in a family. And I just think that it's really important that we look at that, and we look at the times that we offer our families to pick up tech. We have parents who work several jobs, shift work, and we have to make sure that we're, we are meeting all of our students' needs, even if it's a small percentage in our board.
Thank you for your comments, trustee Guzzo. Up next, we have trustee DeRosa, then trustee Carabella.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna cede my, my turn. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So what I'm thinking, or what I would like to ask about what you just said, Director Daley, about mandatory attestation. So I guess I'm wondering if there, if a staff, or I'm thinking, you know, of parents who want to volunteer at the school and be around their children and help out. So if they don't fill out the mandatory attestation, because perhaps they find the options, either they don't want to disclose, they don't find any option that they, in good conscience, can enter, or if they do have, maybe feel under duress of going for rapid testing. So if, if they don't fill out the mandatory attestation, what, what is the consequence?
Director Daley?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So the direction that we've received from the ministry is that the following groups should be covered in the attestation process. So all school board employees, staff, that includes daily and long-term occasional teachers, casual education workers, school board trustees, bus drivers, or other transportation drivers. Following individuals, if attending the school premises frequently and have direct contact with staff or students, including student teachers, students on educational placement, volunteers, those who provide professional services to children at school, and third-party contractors. So to me, trustee Carabella, that says, if someone's gonna volunteer in the school, and they're gonna be there on a frequent basis, they need to complete the attestation form. If they are not fully vaccinated, then they would be committing to doing the twice-weekly testing, to help ensure the safety of our students and staff. And that would be what we're asking them to do. If a volunteer couldn't meet that requirement, then they wouldn't be able to volunteer at the school.
Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, thank you. And if you're staff, and how do you, I mean, it's private health information, whether a person has been vaccinated or not, and I speak, I respect both decisions, whatever people want to, that they voluntarily consent to, I completely respect that. But if you're, and if you're a staff, and you are not able, or a volunteer who has to go get the rapid testing, and is it visible to other staff, will you be identified? Could you be possibly discriminated against?
Director Daley?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So certainly, the, the testing, if a staff member had, had to undergo the twice-weekly rapid testing, the expectation would be that that would happen probably at their home, certainly not during instructional time. There's really no reason why another staff member would be privy to that information. Obviously, as people are doing that declaration, there would be board-level staff that would need to know that information in order to distribute the tests. But there's no reason why it would go beyond, it would go beyond that threshold.
Thank you. Up next, we have trustee DeRosa.
Very quick question. I think trustee Carabella set for, at the beginning of this discussion, Niagara as an example, are we lining up to, to the Niagara board in terms of this question?
Trustee, sorry, Director Daley?
I, I'm not aware of what the Niagara board's doing with regards to, to how they're rolling out the mandatory attestation policy. I, I would have to look and see what they're doing. Certainly, different boards are approaching it in somewhat different manners, but I'm not, I'm not familiar with their, with their policy, trustee DeRosa.
Trustee DeRosa, do you have a follow-up?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Have we looked at board staff and board meetings on whether or not we're looking at attestations or mandatory vaccination to resume in person?
Director Daley?
Sorry, trustee Guzzo, can you connect that with me with regards to attestation and board staff? I didn't quite catch that.
Sorry, the board staff, are we looking at mandating vaccination to resume board meetings for board staff and trustees? Has I had any thought of the policies?
I, I haven't, I haven't thought about that. I do know that even with, even with an attestation done by trustees, if they did it, we are still limited on the number of people we can actually fit in the boardroom. And I know there's a sign on the boardroom door, I got to go over to take a look at it.
Twenty, I believe.
Then that, I'll, I'll, I'll defer to Chair Murphy on that. So I, I think in terms of face-to-face, or how board meetings would transpire, I think that's really up to, to the board of trustees to, to determine.
Trustee Guzzo, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, but there is an ability to return to in-person if the capacity is twenty now for in the boardroom.
I, I think people, I, I think there is that ability. I, I know that the, the, the change to the regulation that allows trustees to connect remotely has been extended, I believe, until, actually, until the end of this trustee term. So I'm not sure, I, I think that option would still be available to trustees, whether or not they're meeting in person or connecting remotely.
Sorry, just a, just a clarification, but then I would suggest, though, is if we're, if we're similar to board staff, we would be required to provide an attestation, correct, or proof of vaccination?
Trustees are one of the groupings that are being asked to provide an attestation. Really, I think trustee Guzzo, regardless of whether they're, they're coming to the board for board meetings, I think it's probably, in addition to that consideration, it's probably more around the ability of trustees to be able to, to go to a school, as, as opposed to come to the board office. But it might be, it might be both of those, both of those circumstances.
Perfect, thank you. That was gonna be my second part of it, especially if we're resuming in-person celebrations and whatnot, that would allow for trustees to attend. I think that our stakeholders and our parents would be happy to know that, that it does extend to trustees.
Trustee Carabella, you have the floor?
Thank you. Just to follow up with my other question. So with the distributed, distribution of the rapid testing, how is it going to be done so that it's private?
Director Daley, or Superintendent Bakaij?
I think I could start, and, and thank you, Superintendent, sorry, thank you, trustee Carabella. That is a question that we are still struggling with a little bit in terms of how we do that distribution. Have reached out to a couple of other boards as well to see where they are in that process. Some are going to deliver rapid tests to schools, based on kind of a percentage. I, I think what the ministry has said, in an initial shipment of tests, they, you know, assuming that- based on kind of a percentage. I, I think what the ministry has said in an initial shipment of tests, they, you know, assuming that province-wide, if there's twenty percent of the overall population that is not completely vaccinated, that they would look at our number of staff and, and determine the number of tests that they could send to a board. We haven't quite landed on how that distribution is going to work yet, because as you've noted, there, there are some privacy concerns there. So, so we, I don't have a definitive answer for you tonight on that.
Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up?
Thank you, not right now. Thank you.
Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Just an observation, if you'll allow, Mr. Chair, I think the issue of trustees visiting schools, the rules would fall, you know, they would be subject to the same rules as everyone else attending the schools. With respect to the attendance of the board meetings in person, I think the limitations would still apply, the number of limitations that fit in the boardroom would still apply. And I don't necessarily see an end to the ability to use teams to attend virtual meetings. So although I have a preference for face-to-face interaction, I don't see us resuming, resuming face-to-face meetings in the immediate future, either for practical reasons or for for the simple fact that YouTube or Teams has facilitated that these meetings quite a bit, they're just very convenient in some cases. So anyways, just an observation. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee DeRosa. Trustee Antomasi, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So my question with regards to returning at our board, have we done an air change survey of our boardroom? And has the air been improved and has there been a measured standardized report for the HVAC system before we even entertained coming back to the board, regardless of the fact that we can have twenty people in that room?
Maybe trustee Antomasi, maybe I can jump in. The air conditioning is not working today, and I'm sitting here in a wool suit, so it's, it's a very good question. Please, go ahead, Director Daley.
And I'm gonna turn that over to Superintendent Merritt to talk about testing that was done at, at kind of our non-school facilities, and also the work that's been done here at the CEC, because we did have some work going on the roof the last, the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, thank you, Director Daley, and, and through the chair. We, we did have a, a lot of work going on at our board office as well, so all the same things that we've done at all of our schools, we've also done at our, at our board office as well, so the system was, or the, all the systems there, we have various systems, we have various buildings throughout the campus there. They were all assessed by our, by our HVAC team, air balancing and re-commissioning was done where needed, upgrading filters. We actually have a few new units there as well, and then right where the, the area where the boardroom is, we had a new roof put on there as well and a new rooftop unit. So we're in the final stages of hooking that up now and having it ready to go. So a few issues with material deliveries, but we're, we're nearing the end now, so we do have a lot of new systems in place at the board office to accommodate some of the improved ventilation measures that we've seen throughout our schools as well.
Trustee Antomasi, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, I do. Has staff thought of having dividers at our board table? So that, I think that's mandatory, because I don't think we'd be able to keep the proper distances. I know that all other boards are, have taken those measures and have implemented them. So that's my question.
Director Daley?
Sorry, trustee Antomasi, are you specific to the, the boardroom, dividers at the boardroom?
Yes, I'm only referring to the boardroom. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We, we haven't, we haven't looked into that as far as I know. I think we would be, if, if there was a desire amongst all trustees to meet face-to-face in the boardroom, we would be able to do it with, probably with appropriate distancing. But we might need, we might not be able to have everyone sitting around that internal horseshoe, and as a result, would have to limit what other people we, we'd be able to allow in the room. So while we, we'd be able to accommodate trustees and, and some senior staff, we probably wouldn't be able to accommodate everyone, regardless of whether there was barriers put up or not, and would really have to limit any of the public that would come in.
Thank you, trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Just a question with respect to moving, moving back and forth between virtual and in-person learning. I know that we did set forth the guidelines as far as when those requests could be made. But in the event that we do start to see an increase in numbers or there is a change out there and parents are feeling less comfortable about their kids being in person, if that ends up happening, hopefully it doesn't, but if they do, what are things looking like as far as requests for students to move to a virtual platform? Or, or vice versa, if they're feeling much more comfortable. I know we've set that, that deadline. I'm wondering if that's written in stone, and I'm wondering, again, if there's more flexibility for those families looking to move from in-person to virtual, virtual learning, again, if they are feeling uncomfortable about the safety of their kids.
Superintendent Alfo, would you like to take that one?
Sure, and through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Agnew. Trustee Agnew, it's a good question. Right now, we do have the waitlist for the virtual school. Our goal is to accommodate all the requests that came in with placement by Tuesday next week. Okay, so it is around staffing, it's around balancing those classes. We did put out the survey early so we would be prepared, and now we've had an influx, but we also had people who had chose virtual who actually want to go back to brick and mortar, and we allowed them to do that as well. Okay, so we're hoping that any requests that came in that will honor them and will be able to place everybody by Tuesday next week. We do have some considerations not to, and from like a spec ed perspective, we want to make sure those classes are balanced, not too many needs in one class. They're a teacher, or that it's not good for the students, so we need to work that out this week. In terms of changing back to virtual past this initial startup, the challenge is that it, it, it's disruptive for the students because their classroom teacher gets to know them, gets to know what their needs are, and we begin programming for them. And if we have the same events that happened last year, where we moved children back and forth, that's what the continuity, that didn't create a good continuity for kids or for teachers. And so we wanna sort of, we've learned from that last year, so we don't want to have that to happen again this year. I'm not, I don't want to say that we can just start moving people back and forth again. That's not. Our schools are safe, and people who chose to be back in school know what the protocols are in school, know what the state of the affairs are of the province with COVID, and the government's gonna direct us if a lot of us have to go back, but parents have to own that decision right now. You know, if there's unique situations, we're definitely listening to a conversation, but we can't start moving kids back and forth except for that turnaround in February.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Superintendent Alfo.
Okay, no problem.
Do you have a follow-up, trustee Agnew?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, oh, sorry, Director Daley.
It might be an opportunity just to, because I didn't mention it in the presentation, but just for trustees to be aware, for our elementary virtual school, we're around nine hundred students to start up the school year, at least that's what we're looking at, and for our secondary students across the system that have indicated they're gonna participate remotely, as of the last check, a little over a thousand, I think a thousand and thirty-four or thirty-five. So just to give you a bit of an idea of, of where we're at as we, we start the school year.
Great, thank you. Up next, we have trustee Carabella.
Hello, thank you for this opportunity again to ask a question to Director Daley again about the attestation. How does this attestation, because it's mandatory, allow individual Canadians to have their right to have their private medical information be protected, be private? Because information should be between the individual and their doctor, and here they're being asked to disclose it.
Director Daley?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I, 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 I don't know if I can comment on that from, from the ministry's perspective. That's who we're taking our direction from. I can certainly assure our, our staff that any information that we do collect is strictly for the purposes of following the government's direction, and in terms of how we secure that information, we'll do it in a way that, that we'll take every precaution that we can to ensure that none of that information goes beyond where it needs to go beyond. So we're following the direction outlined by the Ministry of Education with regards to the attestation process. That's what we've been asked, actually, that's what we've been directed to do, and that's what we're doing.
Before I ask you if you have a follow-up, trustee Carabella, I see that trustee Guzzo has a point of privilege.
Yes, that's fine. I'm through with my questions.
It's done. Don't worry about it.
Okay, and I think trustee Guzzo, you have the floor next. You, you're, you're complete, right, trustee Carabella? Is that what you said?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
No, I'm okay. I'm out past. Thank you, for the sake of wanting to move on.
Okay, we do not have any other questions, so thank you very much, Director Daley, for your return to school, and you answered quite, quite a few questions. Appreciate it. Oh, trustee O'Hern Chernata, under the wire.
I just got it under the wire. Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, and just quickly, through you, Director Daley, and Superintendent Carderos have helped me answer some of the questions I've had over the lunch hours. So I'm just wondering, for the greater of the good, the operational issue was when some of the lunches, especially in high school, at the secondary level or later in the day, maybe someone could quickly speak to that for people that are tuning in and watching us live, might help answer some questions.
Director Daley?
Sure, and thanks for that question. Yeah, trustees will recall that with, with all of our secondary students returning to school, or the vast majority of them returning to school face-to-face, and being there for the full day, obviously, kids do need a chance, A, to take a break, and B, to eat, or, or both of those things. Because of the size of our schools and the size of our, our cafeterias, we thought that in order to provide kind of the safest lunch breaks or breaks, that we would divide our student population into four lunch periods. Many of our schools would have had two lunch periods. At one time, many of our bigger schools had three lunch periods. So that, that part in, in and of itself isn't new. But the four periods kind of spread out later in the day is new. We, we tried to get a bit of space in between each of those staggered lunch periods so we could do a quick, kind of make sure garbage is off the tables and, and swept up before the next group of kids came in. We felt that doing it by grade would at least allow, you know, it's, it's not a perfect system, but for all grade nines to be on the same lunch is probably preferable, at least if students in grade nine, or grade ten for that matter, didn't have a buddy in their period one or period two class, they would at least have a chance to make some of that connection at lunch from a distance. For our, so at all of our high schools, the, the lunches are grade nine lunches first, then grade ten, eleven, and twelve. There's no doubt, no doubt that the, kind of the official grade twelve lunch period right towards the end of the day, that last forty minutes, is later. Now, in a typical year, a student could have our lunch period, our last lunch period, most schools would have ran up until about one-ten or one-fifteen. So our last lunch period at most schools is starting around one-thirty, so that has pushed it back. I think there is the ability in our grade twelve classes with our grade twelve staff to, to have those floating breaks in that last period and ability for students to, you know, have a quick kind of grab-and-go snack that they're with them so they don't have to wait from eight-thirty right up until one-thirty. It's, it's not ideal, but in order to try and keep the number of kids on a lunch to a reasonable number, that's why we went with the four lunch periods. We originally, in, in kind of the, the sample scheduling that we had, I think we had grade twelve students returning to class, so, so going to class, having lunch, then coming back for about thirty minutes. And speaking with the, with the schools, that probably wasn't ideal in terms of having the kids come back for that last thirty minutes. So the way I think it's gonna play out at, at all of our secondary schools right now is our grade twelve students kind of end the day with lunch. For students who may be staying to participate in extracurricular activities or need to stay for the bus to get home, they'll have their lunch and be able to do that. For students who are not participating in extracurricular activities or don't, don't have, or provide their own transportation or walk to school, it does give them the opportunity to leave for the day for that last forty minutes, so that helps balance the numbers a little bit as well. It's something that we will keep an eye on as we progress through that first quad. But that's kind of where we're at with those, with those lunches.
Trustee O'Hern Chernata, do you have a follow-up?
No, thank, thank you, Director Daley, and thank you for the comment, being open, moving forward, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Trustee Murphy, it's not in regards to this. It actually is in regards to a motion I'd like to put forward to suspend the rules for the ten o'clock vote due to the technical difficulties we had at the livestream.
Do we have a seconder?
Trustee Agnew?
Seconded by trustee Agnew. So it is a motion to suspend the rules relating to the ten o'clock extension and to confirm the ten-thirty, it does not include then the ten-thirty extension. Is that correct, Parliament Terry Kippour?
That is, that is what I heard. Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, trustee DeRosa?
Just a point of clarification. I'd like to know what the support exactly. And if we're talking about supporting, adding additional time in order to make up to the time lost for the technical difficulties, I am happy to support that, but that is not a suspension of rules if I'm, if I'm reading that correctly.
Yeah, so, and we, and I, I will call on Parliament Terry Kippour afterwards for his opinion. So, so basically, because our bylaws state that we have to have a vote at ten o'clock, it would be suspension of that specific rule which does not impact the ten-thirty vote and does not change the status of the ten-thirty vote. Sorry?
Mr. Chair, how much are we making up for?
Oh, just the half hour.
Is it a half hour, or is it, is it twenty-five minutes, twenty-two minutes? I don't know that we have, I don't know that we have a precise number, and I'm perfectly happy to accept that.
So what, so what it is, just to clarify, trustee DeRosa, so we would suspend the ten o'clock vote. So the ten o'clock vote would not happen, but the ten-thirty vote would happen. So therefore, it is half an hour extension.
Okay.
Yes, trustee Antomasi?
I, I actually called a point of order before trustee Antomasi.
Sorry, I, I didn't hear you. Trustee Guzzo?
Mr. Chair?
So I heard trustee Antomasi call a point of order, so I'm asking trustee Antomasi what his point of order is.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. With reference to suspending the rules, you're suspending all the rules when you suspend the rules. Are you saying that we're suspending just the time vote rule?
Yes, my understanding, and again, I will defer to Parliament Terry Kippour for his advice afterwards, is that when we're talking about suspending a rule, it's specific to the action that we're talking about and only pertains to that action. Parliament Terry Kippour, can I have your advice on that matter? and only pertains to that action. Parliamentary Kapoor, can I have your, uh, advice on that matter?
Uh, that is correct, Chair. The, uh, the board may temporarily suspend a provision of these bylaws, is what your bylaws say, and R O N R says that you are, uh, suspending the rules that interfere with the action that you propose to take. However, uh, I will note that the motion to extend the meeting past 10:00 PM requires two-thirds vote of those present and voting, whereas suspend the rules requires two-thirds vote of members of the board. So, the outcome sounds like it would be the same either way.
Uh, correct. Right. So, so we need, we need the same level of approval on either, uh, other act.
Actually, you need, uh, reading your bylaws carefully, you need less for the 10, uh, for the approval to continue past 10:00 PM.
Uh, it's, it's two-thirds majority, is it not?
Um, four, sorry to confuse things, um, or complicate things. Uh, 418 says meetings of the board shall adjourn no later than 10:00 PM unless two-thirds of the members present and voting agree to an extension, uh, whereas suspending the rules, uh, which is 14.3, requires a two-thirds majority vote of the members of the board. So, it's actually, the, the effect of, the purpose of the suspension would automatically, would be met. If you have that, then you also, you automatically have the two-thirds to extend past 10:00 PM anyway.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion, it has been seconded, so we will call the vote. Uh, Trustee Agnew, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
So, Mr. Chair, what am I voting for exactly now? Could you clarify?
So you're voting to suspend, and so in essence, you're voting to suspend the 10 o'clock vote to extend, and then the next opportunity to extend would be 10:30.
And, can I ask, sorry, I also have a clarif, point of clarification. So at 10:30, the vote needs to be this, needs to be what, to keep going?
It is, it's, it's, we're only suspending the 10 o'clock vote, not the 10:30 vote, so the 10:30 vote would be, as it always is, requires, uh, a unanimous consent.
Okay, yeah.
I will support.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Dwork. Uh, Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Uh, Trustee Antomasi?
Against.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn-Ternata?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Mazri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
Thank you. So we will, uh, only vote at 10:30. Thank you. Uh, so we now are, have completed 4.2. There are no delegations. We're moving on to approval of the minutes. Uh, 6.1, minutes of June the 15th, 2021, regular board meeting. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing that there are none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of, um, Trustee Agnew, seconded by?
O'Brien.
Trustee O'Brien will go to a recorded vote. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn-Ternata?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Mazri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
I'm opposed, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Vice Chair Dwork? Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi?
Against.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Uh, Trustee Murphy's in favor, so motion carries. Item 6.2, minutes of June 16th, 2021, special board meeting. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing that there are none, may I have a motion to move? Vice Chair Dwork, we have seconder?
Trustee Agnew?
Seconded by Trustee Agnew. Will go to a recorded vote. Trustee O'Hearn-Ternata?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Mazri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Uh, Vice Chair Dwork?
Um, Mr. Chair, my, my apologies. Is it 6.1 or 6.2 we're referring to?
6.2.
In favor. Thank you for the clarification.
No problem. Uh, Vice Chair Dwork, sorry, you were in favor. Trustee Guzzo?
Favor.
Uh, Trustee Antomasi?
Uh, in favor, Mr. Chair. Can I make an observation with reference to the voting that the student trustees have put on the floor? They were not present. I don't know how they can approve, regardless of the fact that they do not, their vote is not binding.
Uh, I'll ask for, uh, Parliamentary's Kapoor to comment on, uh, on that point.
Um, Mr. Chair, first, has the vote been completed?
Uh, sorry, it hasn't. So we'll complete the vote, then I'll come back and ask for your opinion. Sorry about that. Uh, Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Uh, Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Uh, Trustee Murphy's in favor, so motion carries. Uh, so, uh, Parliamentary Kapoor, can I have your opinion on, um, uh, student trustees voting on this special board meeting when they were not in attendance? If they had, were not in attendance. I think there was once, one, uh, Rosie, do you recall, there was one special board meeting we had for, with a student trustee in attendance, was there not?
It is, it is immaterial whether they were or not, Mr. Chair. R O N R is clear that members of a meeting may vote on the minutes of, of a meeting that, even if they were not in attendance.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that, uh, clarification. So we're moving on to 6.13, minutes of the June 24th, 2021, special board meeting. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions? Seeing that there are none, may I have a mover?
Trustee Agnew?
Moved by Trustee Agnew, seconded by?
I'll second it. Chernota?
Seconded by Trustee O'Hearn-Ternata. Uh, we'll move to a recorded vote. Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Mazri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Uh, Vice Chair Dwork? Trustee Guzzo?
Favor.
Trustee Antomasi?
Against.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn-Ternata?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy's in favor, so the motion carries. We are on to 6.4.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes?
Um, before we start the next vote, I'd just like to say on behalf of the student trustees that we are voting for the approval of these minutes on behalf of the student trustees that were present at those previous board meetings.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Uh, so item 6.4, minutes of the June 29th, 2021, special board meeting. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing that there are none, may I have a mover?
Oh, sorry, uh, Mr. Chair, I do have a, a, a question, and I just couldn't type in hand up fast enough. Sorry.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, so it's about, uh, number point two, and also another point, um, 5.1, at the end. It sort of comments about the chair overruled a point of order regarding the motion being out of order. And then number two says the chair overruled a point of order regarding an agenda item not properly added to the agenda. So my question of clarification is, shouldn't it say what the point of order was, or what the agenda item was? Um, like a bit more detailed. Uh, it just says, yeah, I think that would reflect, uh, what happened better. I'd like to find out about that. Thank you.
Um, that's, that is a good question. I think our, the bylaws state that it records the action. I'm going to ask Parliamentary Kapoor for his, um, his opinion on that.
First of all, um, can you, uh, please remind me which minutes and which item we're looking at? I'm, I'm, I've lost track of my pages.
No problem. On June 29th?
Yep, June 29th, and right on this point number two, approval of the agenda, the chair overruled a point of order regarding an agenda item not properly added to the agenda. So I would think that it would state what the item, like what the point of order was, that this particular item and state what the item was should not be on the agenda because of bylaw, or whatever was, you know, um, stated as the point of order. And again, it comes up in, in section, uh, five, right at the end, just before the vote, on page 55, halfway up the page. It just said the chair overruled a point of order regarding the motion being out of order. So I'm, I think that the trustee who put that forward would have explained their point of order, like why they thought it was out of order. And I just think those are important details to, uh, in- include in the minutes, so I'm asking for clarification on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, through you, can I, uh, I'd like to be able to give you a concise answer. Uh, can I ask if you continue on to the minutes of August? Uh, the August meeting where I already had jumped ahead, and I will, and by then I will, uh, have an answer that's more concise for you.
Okay, so we'll come back to, uh, 6.4. So we're...
Yeah, I have a point of order.
Oh, Trustee Antomasi, yes?
I have a point of order. Uh, the student trustees stated that they were voting on behalf of the outgoing trustees. Proxy voting is not allowed, and that has been ruled by Parliamentary Kapoor in the past.
So let me, so let me rule, please let me rule on Trustee Antomasi's point of order. Uh, Trustee Antomasi, it wasn't proxy voting, it, as indicated by, uh, Parliamentary Kapoor, that any trustee can vote on the minutes because they are published and they read them, and they can approve them. If the opinion of the student trustee, uh, led you to believe that they were proxy voting, it's, I would say that it's, uh, probably a misunderstanding.
Our point of order, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Trustee O'Brien?
Mr. Chair, are we not in the middle of a vote?
Actually, no, we're not.
Oh.
So right now, we are, we are on item 6.5, and we're about to, um, we're about to address it.
So we didn't vote at all on 6.4?
No, so Parliamentary Kapoor asked for a few moments to be able to answer, uh, Trustee Carabella's question, so we're moving on to 6.5, and then we're going to come back to 6.4. So item 6.5, minutes of the August 17th, 2021, special board meeting. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing that there are none, may I have a motion to move? Vice Chair Dwork, we have a seconder?
Trustee Agnew?
Trustee Agnew will move to a recorded vote. Uh, Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
I'm opposed, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Vice Chair Dwork? Trustee Guzzo?
Favor.
Trustee Antomasi?
Against.
Trustee Carabella?
Oh, I'll abstain. I wasn't able to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn-Ternata?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Uh, Trustee Mazri Amar?
In favor.
And Trustee Murphy's in favor, so 6.5 carries. Uh, Parliamentary Kapoor, are you ready for 6.4? Or would you like, uh, actually, we have to, we have to, the last 6.5 is the last, so. If you need a few minutes, we can give you a few minutes, if you like.
Uh, I think I'm okay now. Thank you, Chair. I appreciate the, uh, board's indulgence to give me a couple of minutes. Um, the, uh, the rules, uh, regarding points of order is that the president's, uh, reasons for the ruling should be included in the minutes. Um, it does not go more specifically, uh, into the, into the, those re, into that, uh, other than saying that what I just quoted, uh, that the reasons for the ruling should be included. Um, I suppose if members feel that these are not adequately clear, that they can propose amendments, or, uh, that the, this particular set of minutes can be held back and, uh, suggestions can be made for how to make those points of order clearer, uh, and brought back to the next meeting.
So to clarify, the, the, uh, bylaw states that the reason for the ruling is recorded, but not the subject or the content of what was proposed. Is that correct?
Uh, that's, that's actually, uh, Robert's rules, and I, and whatever would be, whatever would be required to make that understandable to a reader, is the logical, uh, follow-through on that. Is that if the re, if the reasons are, the reasons need to be there with enough context that the reader can understand the right reasons for the ruling, would be my advice.
Okay. Uh, so I would put to the trustees, is this something that we want to remove and, and bring back to the next meeting once we've had time to, uh, review? I, you know, obviously, remembering the details of, of that specific meeting is, is a bit challenging. We have this many to go through.
I, I would, I would be grateful if that happened, and if Rosie could just skip to those parts and add in the details. Thank you.
Uh, well, I think we would have to, we would have to bring this back to the next meeting, and then at that time, it would be to ask for additions. And then by consent, we would either by consent have to agree to those additions, or we would have to vote, and the majority would carry. Is that correct, so Parliamentary Kapoor?
Yes, uh, you could, uh, the secretary is, uh, entitled to bring a revised set of minutes if, uh, if, if they wish. Uh, but, uh, the process would be that if whatever version comes next week, or next meeting, is, uh, corrections, and, or, uh, can be made by the board.
Okay, so what I was suggesting, just that it would give people time to review on their own, and then if Trustee Carabella came with those, um, additions, people would be better informed to vote on it.
That's off with me. Um, if the board allows me to do it, I thought Rosie has the, um, access as well. Fine.
Uh, Parliamentary Kapoor, can we make that decision, or does that have to be voted on?
If there's no objection to deferring it to the next meeting, then it, you've decided it by unanimous consent.
Okay, are there any objections to deferring 6.4? Uh, I see. Uh, Trustee Antomasi, you object, so, uh, Parliamentary Kapoor, would we vote, and then majority would carry? Rule would carry?
Yes, sure.
Okay, so we'll, we'll take it to a vote whether we will defer 6.4, uh, approval minutes to the next meeting. Trustee DeRosa, how do you vote?
I support that, Chair.
In favor?
Point of order. Um, I think this is two-thirds.
Pardon me, uh, Trustee Antomasi?
Um, if we're changing an item on the agenda, and this is approval of minutes, this would require the same as suspending the rules, two-thirds majority.
We're not, we're not changing the agenda. We are, we are addressing 6.4. The action is to defer it, so it's not a, a change to the agenda.
You're changing the agenda by deferring it.
No, the agenda, the agenda is set. We just discussed item 6.4. That's my... No, the agenda, the agenda is set. We just discussed item 6.4. That's my ruling. So I'm ruling against your point of order. Uh, we're in the middle of a vote. Vice Chair Dwork? Trustee Guzo?
Opposed.
Uh, trustee Antamasi?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn-Turnata?
In favor.
Uh, trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Mazri Amar?
Sorry, opposed.
Uh, sorry, did you say opposed?
Yes, I did.
Oh, thank you. Uh, trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Uh, and trustee Murphy's in favor, so we have two for six motion carries. So item 6.4 will be deferred to the next board meeting. Uh, item seven is a summary about standing items from previous meetings. It's there. Uh, I think, I don't know if anybody has any questions. Trustee Carabella, do you have a question regarding those items?
Yes, very quickly, uh, the first one, COVID-related financial reporting. It just says quarterly report. If Superintendent Loffs could indicate which month that's coming to help me be on track. Thank you.
Uh, Superintendent Ten Loffs, do you know when the next, or I'm sure you know. Can you tell us when the next, um, report is due?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, yes, the next quarterly report will be coming in December.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to action items, uh, action 8.1. The following is a notice of motion from the June 1st, 2021 regular board meeting. Uh, trustee Guzo, you have the floor to read the motion.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Whereas a provincial petition has gathered over 9,000 signatures to support menstrual equity throughout Ontario. And whereas the Halton Catholic District School Board passed a motion for menstrual equity in 2020, it resolved that in collaboration with the Halton District School Board, the Halton Catholic District School Board Chair write a letter to the Ministry of Edu-, Minister of Education to urge the provincial implementation of accessible and free menstrual hygiene products across Ontario schools.
Uh, thank you. This motion was moved by trustee Guzo. Do we have a seconder? Vice Chair Dwork, uh, vice Chair Dwork got in under the wire. Uh, trustee Guzo, please open the discussion.
Thank you. I, I can't take credit for this motion. However, I did have the privilege of working with our former student trustee, Kelly. A student Kelly, Kristen Kelly, uh, who joined us this evening, and I'm not sure she's still on the line. But she presented so eloquently and this just seems like the natural step. First, we saw it from trustee Swan in the previous year when he brought this motion forward with us to implement free menstrual products in all our schools, uh, which was a step in the right direction, um, and a step in menstrual equity. And this just seems like the next, the next natural step. As a board, we have a collective voice to, to offer equity and inclusion for our students in as many walks of life as we can. And this would be the next natural move as it should be something that is offered through the ministry to all schools and for all students across the province. And in fact, actually throughout the country. And I'd like to see the remainder of my time for trustee Kelly, just to recap one of the other importances, as she didn't get the opportunity to do this um, at our meeting when this regular motion was scheduled.
Uh, sorry, trustee?
Um, point of order, I'm just, point of order, I'm just curious about that. Can we do that?
Uh, I don't, I don't believe we can allot part of our...
It would be no different than having a staff member talk about a motion. They don't, we move the motion. Since I'm moving the motion, I'm asking her to, to, I'm giving her time to speak to it with me.
Uh, I will ask Parliamentarian Kapoor, I will ask Parliamentarian, please, order. I will ask Parliamentarian Kapoor for his opinion.
Mr. Chair, can you recap what the place I was found staff, I just reconnected?
So trustee Guzo has started discussion and has asked to, um, allot a part of her discussion time to trustee Kelly, uh, the former trustee Kelly. And I was asking Parliamentarian Kapoor if under our bylaws that, that is allowed versus trustee Kelly just speaking or, sorry, uh, former trustee Kelly wouldn't be able to speak because she's no longer trustee.
Okay.
R O N R does not allow a member to yield their time to another person. Or to cede any portion of their time.
Okay, thank you. So we don't, we're unable to do that, trustee Guzo?
So I, sorry, can I, I just ask a clarified question then from Parliamentarian Kapoor? Not to belabor this point because we seem to be doing that all night anyways. But so when we have staff speak to motions and we need to collaborate with them, how does that work? Or if, let's say at Queens Park, when they cede their time to somebody else, how does that work if it's not Roberts rule of order that allows that?
Um, regarding Queens Park?
But this isn't, this is opening statements.
Um, opening statements constitute part of debate on a motion. Uh, Queens Park uses, uh, and other legislatures use very different sets of rules than Roberts rules. Uh, and some of them allow it, but R O N R specifically disallows it. Usually, uh, in this setting, uh, staff members are asked to give uh, opinion and, uh, or advice and information, uh, here. And that's usually done without objection. Uh, and that would not apply to, um, non-staff member or non-trustee would be the advice I would give regarding that.
Okay, thank you. I'll continue then with my time.
Thank you.
So unfortunately, as we know, we weren't allowed to get to this motion to meetings. I believe it was in June that this was put on the table. So unfortunately, former trustee Kelly did not have the opportunity to have the student voice heard once again at this table. So here we are in September, a new school year, asking to lobby the government for something that allows equity to our students. And I apologize to former trustee Kelly for all the hard work that you did and all the time you put in. However, your presentation was amazing as always. I am so happy to have had you here tonight and I look forward to the baton that you have passed to the new trustees, the new student trustees. And I would ask that the remainder of my trustees, fellow trustees, support this motion as it just seems, it is just the next natural step in creating menstrual equity for all of our students. Thank you.
Uh, sorry, I think I was muted. On the speaker, thank you, trustee Guzo. On the speakers list, we have trustee DeRosa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. I won't use all my three minutes, but I want to make the point that, uh, you know, trustee Kelly is commend, is a commendable, uh, young woman who, um, uh, is very impressive in, in, in the time that she spent with us. But today, as we speak, she is a regular citizen. Notwithstanding, I would like to speak to the, to the virtue of this and the value of this particular motion. Uh, I'm prepared to, to support this motion for, in principle, for what, for what it is trying to achieve. And that is to supply, to acknowledge the need of the less fortunate young ladies in our system. Okay, and that's as far, that's my fundamental reason for supporting something like this. However, um, this may be just a technicality, but the, the motion resolves that in collaboration with the art, the Halton District School, uh, School Board. You know, I'm, 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 I'm happy to cooperate with other school boards and especially our co-terminus board on every occasion that we need to. But I don't think that's necessary. I think this, this motion would stand by itself, supported by us, by Catholic District School Board. So I would propose to amend the motion to, uh, remove the collaboration with the Halton District School Board with all due respect. Uh, and then move forward with that amendment. So, um, that's what I would like to propose. And I'm happy to support it with that amendment. Thank you.
So, so just to clarify, your amendment is to strike out, um, in collab, in collaboration with the Halton, Halton District School Board? So it would be, be it resolved, the Halton Catholic District School Board Chair write a letter? So, uh, Rosie, are you able to do with this configuration? Uh, so trustee DeRosa, can you confirm that is your intention? Is the words that are struck out?
Yes, absolutely.
Remove those?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So do we have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee O'Brien. So trustee DeRosa, then you can open the debate on this amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really don't have much more to say than, um, Ms. Kelly had to say in, in, in the support of this motion. I think there's, there's valid reasons to do that. And really, the spirit of it is, uh, is to take care of, um, our most needy, needy students in the system. Uh, be it sanitary napkins or be it pencils and supplies at school, I would support any, any motion to, uh, provide, uh, and support needy uh, students in our system. And this is just an example. We can come up with other examples later on. And certainly, this is in the front of us today and I would, I, I would support it in that spirit. And I, and I would encourage, uh, my fellow trustees to do the same. Thank you.
Motion? Oh, sorry, trustee Carabella, I have you on the speakers list for the original motion. This would be a new speakers list for the amendment. So I'm not sure if you wanted to speak to the amendment or not, or, or if there's any other trustees who want to speak to the amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of my questions was regarding that section about, uh, in collaboration with Halton District School Board. Uh, could trustee Guzo or, uh, explain at, at what stage Halton District School Board is about writing this or why she included that in the motion? Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Trustee Guzo?
Halton District, um, did the same initiative that we did, but they did it a year after we did, which means they're on the same page and similar thinking as we are when it comes to period poverty. And in the spirit of collaboration and power and numbers, two boards of our size working together and sending a letter, um, has that much more stay power. Um, at the end of the day, if they decide not to work with us collaboratively, which I don't think would be the case, um, then we would still continue on with the letter. The point is, is, um, this is an important piece and it would be something that we're already on the same page as to anyways.
Uh, thank you. Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up question?
Well, I do. Has, uh, to, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Guzo, uh, have you spoken to a trustee or anyone at the Halton District School Board about this?
No, I have not. The motion hasn't been passed. So why would I enter into that conversation and that would be something that would be done through our chair?
Uh, thank you. Vice Chair Dwork, you have the floor?
Chair, uh, working together with people collaboratively is an in thing, I would say. And it's always good to work together with people. And working together with the, with the co-terminus board, uh, gives us bigger numbers and bigger power, uh, full power, I would say. And so I will not be supporting this amendment.
Uh, thank you. Uh, trustee DeRosa, you're going to be closing debates. I'll leave it open right now. If there's any other trustees to speak to it. If not, then I, then you have the floor to close debate. So are there any other, are there any other trustees who want to speak to this? Uh, doesn't look like there is, so trustee DeRosa, please close debate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, in the spirit, uh, certainly, I'm, I would be the first to support the spirit of collaboration. But if we are jumping to conclusion that that is going to naturally follow as a result of passing this decision, I think we're being a little presumptuous. So what I would suggest is to support the amendment as is, at least we have the opportunity to act alone. It does not prevent us from going to them and saying, listen, look at what we're doing. Why don't you do the same thing? So let's not tie ourselves to, um, the participation or the eventual part or non-participation of our co-terminus board. Let's move on and do this because it is the right thing to do. And then we should encourage them to follow us. Thank you.
We're going to a recorded vote, so to remind trustees, we're voting strictly on the amendment, which is to strike out as you see it on the, uh, the screen in front of you. Vice Chair Dwork, how do you vote? Trustee Guzo?
Against.
Uh, trustee Antamasi? In favor. Trustee Carabella?
I'm in favor.
Uh, trustee O'Brien?
Could you come back to me, please?
Uh, yes. Uh, trustee O'Hearn-Turnata?
Opposed.
Uh, trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Uh, trustee Mazri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
Uh, trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor, Mr. Chair.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Uh, so the motion failed, sorry, the amendment, the motion for the amendment fails. We will go back to the original motion. Trustee Carabella, you were on the speakers list?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, from our experience that we had it at the school last year, I think was the first full year of implementing this at our board. Could the superintendent, uh, give me an estimate of how much it costs our board to do that? And I think we, we, sorry to interrupt, I think we, we installed, um, the machines in the bathrooms plus, uh, was a year's, a year's supply. And I think there was indication that we might be getting it free from some companies. So can we just get a little quick summary on that? Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes, uh, trustee Guzo?
That, that question is not germane to the motion that's on the table. This is strictly in regards to writing a letter. It has nothing to do with the motion that was passed two years ago.
Uh, I, I would agree and I'd ask Parliamentarian Kapoor for his opinion on that. Is the, is the question in order?
I, I would agree with your judgment, Chair.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair, can I defend why I'm asking it? Because you are...
It, it won't, I understand, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't change my ruling, but, uh, but, uh...
It's fine.
Uh, so, so we're at 10:30. We have to vote to extend. Uh, trustee Guzo?
In favor.
Trustee Antamasi?
I'm against, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn-Turnata?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Mazri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Derosa?
So, Mr. Chair, can I ask, can I ask a point of clarification? Are we at the unanimous stage now, or?
Yes, yes, we are.
We are. So in fact, in fact, we don't have, we do not have unanimity, right?
That's correct, but we have to finish the vote.
I will vote in favor, sir.
Uh, vice chair Duor? And trustee Murphy's in favor. Uh, we are not unanimous, so we cannot extend, but we have to finish the action item in front of us. Uh, are there any other people who wish to speak to this, uh, motion? If not, we'll go to recorded vote. Uh, so we will vote, uh, trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanted to say that, um, that I think there are many diverse products on the market for individual needs of girls. And I think each board has the freedom to decide how to address this issue in their own board. So, um, I'm not sure that a letter asking the government to provide it across the, the province, um, is, um, is germane right now.
Uh, thank you. Uh, trustee, trustee Derosa?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I would like to, to basically close by saying I have absolutely no problem supporting.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, it's my motion.
Uh, trust, trustee Derosa has the floor. I don't, he's not closing debate. I think he, he is giving his opinion.
Sorry, but he also had the floor already on this point, if I'm not mistaken, when, before he made his amendment.
Uh, I did check through. Uh, you're correct, you have, trustee Derosa, you have spoken to this, so unless you have a question for clarification, we would have
I would, yes, I do have a, uh, question for clarification, Mr. Chair. I want to know what is the benefit of this collaboration, this presumed collaboration, which hasn't been discussed yet. I think we could do this alone, and if I vote against this motion, is it, is because precisely of that reason and not for support of the, uh, spirit of the motion. I would support the, the intent of the motion, but this presumed collaboration, I think, is a, is a stretch. We can, as a board, we can do this alone, and we should do it alone. And I'm not here to support a motion that would presume that another board would cooperate with us. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so if I can add some context to this, uh, I was contacted by, and maybe trustee Guzzo, you can help me out. Uh, I'm going to get his title wrong, but a, a student advocacy group who is, uh, petitioning all of the school boards in Ontario to write this letter. Uh, and, and I have, I won't have the number right, but he's, he's at a significant percentage uh, of boards who have written this letter, and he is going to be meeting with, uh, the Minister of Education in the next few weeks. So, so that's really, uh, maybe some context that will help, um, trustees, that this is a, a province-wide initiatives where, I'm, I'm going to use the number, don't quote me on it, but I think it was something like 80% of the boards have already written this letter. So that helps with some context.
Mr. Chair, if I may, if I may, just to pick up on that, and, and I promise you, I will shut up after this. Our, our, um, duty and our responsibility as trustees of the H C D S B is not to be political activists.
Mr. Chair.
And that gives me, that gives me another reason why I will not support this mission, this, uh, this, uh, motion. We are here to serve the H C D S B, Mr. Chair, and not to do politics. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to end this. Uh, so trustee Guzzo, you have your clothes. Please close, and then I will go to recorded votes.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have, um, I, I have a point of clarification. So you said, who was the person that you said was requesting the letter?
Uh, it was, I can get, actually, I, it's like, he called me today, which I wasn't able to take his call. Uh, it is, uh, Stephen Mensah.
Okay, i- is he affiliated with, with Catholic school boards or with public boards? This is relevant, and the reason this is relevant is because we have a fiduciary responsibility only to Catholic
Uh, yes, trustee Guzzo, what is your, uh, what is your point of order?
This is not a point of privilege, asking whether or not he is a Catholic student or not a, our public board. This, this, it impacts all students, and we had, this came from our student body.
Right, correct. So you are correct. Uh, what I was attempting to do, uh, in error was to give some context to the discussion, which in effect ended up sidetracking the discussion, so I apologize for that. Trustee Guzzo, you have your three minutes to close. Please close.
Thank you. This is about our students. This is about our female students who suffer from periods. They have periods. Men don't have periods. It's just a state, it's just a known fact. So why are we even debating this? Our female students and our male students came forward and asked us to do this. There is a petition that they have asked us to support. To me, it's a no-brainer. And us partnering with the Halton District School Board shows leadership on our behalf in that we're seeking their collaboration to make this happen. For who? For our students, for the girls. So the girls that we have won't miss classes anymore, won't be embarrassed to go to the office to ask, can they have a pad, and that they're going to be supported, and it won't be just for one special board over another special board. You, you, you can say that we're not politicians, but guess what? We are. Everything we sit here has a political tone to it. So yes, that is our role. Our role is to be politicians, to advocate for our students and what's best for them. So to me, it's a no-brainer, and to our students.
Point of order, point of order. She can't speak on behalf of the board. He's speaking on behalf of the board.
Uh, trustee Intomasi, please allow trustee Guzzo to finish her, her close.
You know, you know what, Mr. Chair? This just shows, once again, it's okay for some people to have opinions, but not others, including our students. This came from our female students and our male students and our non-identifying students and our trans students and our H, LGBTQ plus students. They all want this. So why would we ever say no to doing what's best for every student across our province? That's it.
A reported vote. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Derosa?
Mr. Chair, I will abstain because of the spirit of
Thank, thank you. I don't need to raise, thank you, trustee Derosa. Uh, vice chair Duor? Uh, trustee Guzzo?
1,000% in favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
Against.
Trustee Carabella?
Abstain.
Trustee O'Brien?
Could you come back to me, please?
Uh, yes, trustee O'Hearn-Turnata?
In favor.
Uh, trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Mazri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
Uh, trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
And trustee Murphy's in favor. Uh, motion carries, uh, meeting is adjourned. We have to do our prayer, right? I ask this every time, but, just to clarify. So who is on closing prayer? Trustee Agnew, can you please lead us in closing prayer?
I can, just give me one second here. Um, okay, as we start, um, back with the new school year, um, today, I would ask that all of our staff and students and, um, parents and everyone involved with our board, um, remember the importance of kindness, um, as people are finding their way, um, as we, um, as we embrace, um, another year that's a little bit different from previous years before, and we give each other some grace, um, and again, just remember the importance of kindness and how that can make such a difference in the lives of others. And so if you'll join me in the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Dear Lord, we ask that you would help us to make sure everyone belongs in our thoughts, in our words, and in our actions. We were all made in the image of you. You love us as we are your creation. May we always remember that you are in all of us. Teach us to accept and include everyone we meet, appreciate any differences, welcome all, no matter what they look like or would look, sorry. No matter what they look like or wound-like or where they live. We ask this through your son, Jesus, our friend and teacher, who receives all, loves all, and embraces all. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Uh, thank you. Good night, everyone.